Good evening. The February night 2023 meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. Welcome to our chambers. Mr. Finley? I don't have to read this first part, do I, about the meeting location and all that? Okay, just thank you. Tonight, Councilman Tim Carpenter is out of town, but state law allows members to participate in the meeting virtually, and we're glad to be able to participate with us tonight. Our prayer and pledge tonight will be led by Mercy Manor Board President Caleb Carr. Mercy Manor exists to support and strengthen women experiencing or at risk for crisis pregnancies. They are passionate about offering positive solutions through their maternity home and training center. Please rise.
If you bow your head with me? Father, I just want to come to you tonight so thankful and grateful, Lord, for your love. Lord, thank you for the gospel and the good news of the gospel, and, Lord, thank you for the empty tomb and the fact, Lord, that your love shows no favorites. Lord, thank you for the city of Longview, for the people in it, the leaders in it. Lord, help this meeting tonight. Lord, spread your wisdom throughout, and, Lord, we just thank you for your love, your unconditional love that we gather can outearn or outsend, Lord, as in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, and for the work you all do for the community. Thank you very much. We are now to a presentation, a presentation of proposed updates to the City of Longview United Development Code, UDC. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you some revisions to the UDC. As you may be, as you may remember, city staff sent a memo to council back last year in September and then again in January, just providing you with updates on the process of the revisions. Just a little history on the UDC. Let me go to the next slide here. As you remain, as you may remember, back in 2017, this is when we started the adoption process, when Freeston Nichols was contracted to help us on that. Council approved the UDC in 2020, and it took effect in January of '21. The portions of the UDC, there's really four areas that we're focusing on: basic punctuation, typos, formatting, errors, omissions, and kind of placement, and structural, and then minor and major changes. This is an example of a summary table that we'll be submitting to city council via email tomorrow, rather than go through, there's about five or six pages, it'd take all night to go through it, so I'm not going to bore you with that. But this is just an example of the format that you'll see. It'll have the, the section of the UDC, it'll, it'll have just a basic heading, and then it'll have a brief summary. And if you desire, we can send you the full 500-page redline version, but the summary will, will cover that. The minor changes as well, we'll have those outlined in the same manner. The main area of focus that I want to talk about tonight, though, is the major changes, and those were, as I, as I stated previously, were outlined in that memo. This is basically revisions to the section dealing with sidewalks in Longview. Many of you have made mention of sidewalks to nowhere, and that is something that we're trying to address, how to address the community's concerns with that while still maintaining a high level of what our community desires, quality of life. As you may remember, sidewalks were a major function, a major feature of our comprehensive plan of what our community wanted, so much so that you may have seen around town, Tech Dot has taken our lead with that, with our sidewalk master plan and our focus on sidewalks, and have actually installed sidewalks along Loop 281 in the Pine Tree area, and they've done some improvements at the Highway 80 and Eastman intersection, and all of that is because the focus that our community places on sidewalks for quality of life and alternate modes of transportation. But back to the fee in lieu of sidewalk, so we get a lot of questions and concerns about segments of sidewalks being installed as part of our development processes. And so fee in lieu of is one way to address that, where developers, if they meet certain criteria, and those criteria, whether it be maybe there's no sidewalks in the vicinity that they would connect to, if there's curb, if there's not curb and gutter, or if there's bar ditches or something that would present topographical problems or just unusual circumstances, they would qualify to be able to have an administrative approval where they could pay a fee in lieu of actually installing the sidewalk. And what the fee would do would, the city would take that money, we would set it aside in a separate account where we would save it, and then as time occurs and we can bank that money, the city would participate with that as well as far as budgeting monies. Then we would, we would make a greater impact and build segments of sidewalks that would have a bigger impact in the community. So that's, that's kind of what a fee in lieu of sidewalk is. It's not doing away with the requirement, it's just giving an option to where, instead of having to install that small segment, they're still making an impact into the, the community sidewalk network, because I think our community has said that that's what they want. And so many communities are dealing with this issue with sidewalks to nowhere, if you will, and this is one of the, the main ways that is kind of an evolution of that sidewalk implementation structure. There are some exceptions of when that would not apply, and that would be if, if city or Tech Dot has plans in the near future that would, that would negate some of those exemptions. And so that's kind of the, the fee in lieu of sidewalk proposal. We, we looked at many other communities and, and kind of took this language from best practices from communities that are looking at implementing that and communities that have implemented it. As we've talked to some engineers during projects, and they bring that up about sidewalks to nowhere, we're like, well, we're looking at fee in lieu of requirements. Now, oh, that, that makes sense, that's one way to address it. I, you know, I don't think we get the feedback of, well, let's just do away with sidewalk requirements. So the, the other piece to that that we've seen is with the sidewalk network that we are doing in the parks that we have is neighborhoods and commercial businesses that want to tie into those parks and trail systems with sidewalks. And so we're, we've got a process and a, and a, and a procedure where they can dedicate right-of-way or an easement for that and build a sidewalk to, to, to a basic standard and make that connection that the city would accept. So that's just another feature that ties into the sidewalks. The third and last piece is, as you may remember, we did create some architectural elements that were required in our central business district that would preserve the character and create, keep, keeping with the uniqueness that we have. But what we have found is, it's not really, it's not really appropriate to do that in the entire central business district. And so what we did is we focused on the area, the, the main core area, that is the Tyler Street, basically the Tyler Street core where there is already a high concentration of historic buildings where this would be appropriate, and, and so we're revising that to kind of bring that area back in smaller. And, and then also clarifying canopies. This is the only area in town where you can have a canopy that overhangs into the right-of-way, and that section was in the sign section, not necessarily in the canopy section, so there was a little bit of confusion there that we're correcting. So those are the major revisions that we're proposing. The other revisions are basically clerical in nature or things that were omissions or rewrites, not really changing standards. So our timeline moving forward, obviously, we're presenting it tonight. I'll be sending out information tomorrow with that summary table. It will be presented to Planning and Zoning in March for their consideration and recommendation to council, and then we'll have that before city council in April. And if council makes that approval, then it would become effective May 1st. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Shirley? And please raise your hands so we can, because Mr. Carpenter is not in the room. Any questions? Ms. Gamboa?
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Shirley and your team, for looking into this. I just wanted to know, what are some communities who have implemented this and been successful? And what is their range for the fees typically?
So what the fee would be, and, and communities do the fee structure a number of ways. They, they can set the base fee, and it's a one-size-fits-all. What we're proposing is, and, and when someone submits for a permit for a sidewalk, they have to submit an engineer's cost estimate, because we do require them to give us maintenance bonds and things. So whatever their cost would be, and as long as it's appropriate and is market-based, then that's what they would pay us, is what it would cost them to install that sidewalk.
And then the communities? Do you have like one or two communities that?
Sure. San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, all the big communities, and, and I believe they're, I believe it was San Antonio that I read an article on that's looking at updating some of their neighborhood sidewalk requirements to implement fee in lieu of. So it's definitely something that many communities already have.
Any rural communities that are similar to ours?
That, I couldn't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ishihara?
I just want to make sure I understood something that you said. So the policy would actually stay the same, but now there would be the option for an administrative exception that could be asked for in the process of the permit?
Correct. So they would, if they met the criteria, then it would allow them to not have to install it, they would just pay the fee in lieu of installation, and then that fee would go into an account where the city would install sidewalks around town in the future.
Sounded like they needed approval for that, administrative approval?
Correct.
So that would be who giving them approval?
It would be myself, Director of Development Services, would review for compliance with these, these six standards to see if they fit. And, and honestly, we tried to make those standards very liberal so that, that, you know, a lot of projects would apply for that, or could apply.
I like that I think that makes it a little more streamlined, that they don't need somebody else's approval. But let's say that you said no, would there be an appeal process for them if they wanted to take that somewhere?
Sure. The appeal process would be just appealing to the, the Board of Adjustment on whether they had to even install sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Shirley, I have a question. And maybe I'm just not understanding or reading it correctly, but if we're giving a developer an avenue to not have to put the sidewalk in, because we deem it's either not necessary or not going anywhere and not productive, but we're going to charge the same fee as if you were going to put the sidewalk in anyway, why wouldn't he just put the sidewalk in?
So that, the feedback that we're getting on the sidewalks to nowhere is primarily from community members, not necessarily from developers. I think the feedback we get from the development community would be more along the lines of, why are we having to do sidewalks?
Well, I understand that. We're, we're having to do sidewalks because that's what the community wants.
Correct.
And when the sidewalk installation is appropriate, then we're, that's what the developer has to do, because it's an appropriate adjunct to their project to make City of Longview a nicer place to live and walk and do their business. But where we, where we deem it's not necessary, because it's not going to serve any purpose, which is the only way we, we would say, you don't have to do it, because if it's going to serve a purpose, you got to do it, because that's what we've agreed to do, should we consider having some kind of a, maybe a graded fee or a reduced fee for not having to do it because it's not necessary, or am I just, I'm, maybe I'm just missing this?
Yeah, so if, if a project is deemed not required to have to do sidewalks, either by the city engineer or by variance, or it doesn't meet the standards in the bike and sidewalk plan, then they wouldn't have to put sidewalks in, they wouldn't have to pay the fee.
Okay.
But if sidewalks, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
So if sidewalks are required, and then they say, well, you know, I don't want to put it in because it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's a perception of a sidewalk to nowhere, and I'd rather just pay the fee and wait until the side, the city can put a sidewalk in the whole corridor or something like that.
I got you. I'm sorry, that was my mistake. If it, if we deem it's not necessary, and it's not going anywhere, and it's not going to benefit us, then there's no fee required.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, my, my bad. Okay. Very good. Any, any other questions? Mr. Carpenter has a question.
Michael, at the end of the day, is this still not adding development expense to the lots where we are sidewalks to nowhere?
Need additional fee that wasn't already there with the implementation of the sidewalk requirement. This is just, this is basically addressing a public concern for a perception of sidewalks to nowhere. It's not backing away from the, the requirement of the community desire for sidewalks and pedestrian paths.
But in the case where we have the Seven Brew sidewalk and the McCann Road sidewalks, if this was passed and those came back before your team again, would that be classified as have to or not have to?
Yeah, no, I mean, those, yeah, those, those sidewalks are required, so they would have the option to be able to pay the fee in lieu of. Now, one of the other changes, too, in, in that we realized, like with the Seven Brew, they have a, they built a side path, and so the other piece to that is we're taking out the requirement for them to build side paths. They only have to build a sidewalk, so if it's residential four foot, if it's commercial five foot, if there's a side path required, then that's going to be up to the city in the future to build that side path. So that is one thing that we did make a change. We're like in Seven Brew, they would only be required to do the five-foot sidewalk, and certainly because theirs connects into a, an existing crosswalk intersection, they would still have to be, they would still be required to install their five-foot section because it's tying into an existing network at a corner.
Thank you.
So they probably would not meet the exemption.
Very good. Any other questions of Mr. Shirley? If not, thank you, sir. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
We're not a citizen comment. I do have a few speaker cards, but mostly for zoning. I have one during the citizen comment portion. Dwayne Morales?
Thank you, council, for letting me speak today. I appreciate it. I'm a local company. My name is Dwayne Morales. I'm with AWP at 5103 West Loop 281. We're a traffic control company. We're North America's largest traffic control company, and we're locally here. And we're, we're here to try to do some business with the city of Longview. We, we do a lot of work with other cities with, we're doing the Austin Marathon this weekend, and we'd like to, to try to partner with you and do some, maybe some special events and be there as your, your right-hand man, and maybe if you need something. We work close with Tech Dot. We have the Tech Dot contracts here, so we're familiar with all traffic control zones and, and detours. And we also do disaster response. I know with a lot of the, the hurricanes down south, we respond to a lot of that, but locally, we've had some tornadoes and stuff come through, and we've been very applicable in helping out some of the crews throughout there with the disaster response, shutting down roads, creating detours, putting up temporary traffic signals, using aid fads and guardrails, and different very, very, different various barriers to keep the roads safe. And we want to try to partner with maybe your public works or some of your event coordinators, maybe meet with them and, and let you know what we have to offer. Message boards are some of our big things that we have at a lot of our cities where we're warning traffic, hey, slow down, we got kids here. We're coming into this city, we, we want to slow down traffic as we come in. We also have radar boards we could offer the city. And we're just really here to, to try to press the court and see if we can get your business. Is there anybody here that has any questions on that or that I could speak to on that?
We don't engage in citizen comment. We just let you speak and we.
Oh, wow. This is my first time, so I apologize.
That's okay. Not a problem at all.
But I'm really here just to, to press the court on our, our new company, and we really want to partner with you folks and, and try to get some business. And if anybody afterwards would like to speak to me, I have some cards out here and also have some prices.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you very much. I have no more speaker cards for comments. I have cards for zoning. We'll go over those as we get to them. There's no public safety update today, so we'll go to the consent agenda, but council, let me, let me remind you, Tim is joining us virtually. Sort of accommodate the broadcast proceedings. We'll conduct business a little bit differently as we have in the past. All votes will be a show of hands. Please raise your hand if you want to make a motion, and then a second. If Tim needs to speak, he'll have to raise his hand, and I will recognize him. And please remember, let's do not talk over each other to ensure that Tim can hear what we're saying, and we can hear if he needs to speak to us. So let's do this in an orderly fashion, we will be just fine. We're not a consent agenda. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
I was going to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Snotty? We have a motion, a second. Please, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That was smoother than normal. We're not a zoning. We will start with zoning, but the applicant for zoning item A, PD 23-02, has asked that we postpone this item until our March 9th meeting. So I will entertain a motion. Yes, excuse me, sir, is there a, do you have a question?
He's the applicant. We, they are. They're making a recommendation to postpone the item. Are you not wanting to postpone the item?
Oh.
Okay, okay.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I did not get that email.
Then, then we are not postponing item A. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Then we will go to, are you prepared for item A, Ms. Choi?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, we'll have a public hearing to consider application, PD 2302, filed by Sam Skipper.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Plan Development PD 03-2 to Plan Development PD 2302 for a dance studio located at the corner of Ruthland and McCann Road. In 2003, this property was rezoned to a planned development for general retail for a shopping center with limited uses that are permitted in office and neighborhood services zoning districts. At that time, it excluded self-service fueling stations. There were several conditions placed on that planned development, including an eight-foot masonry fence along the east property lines, a located adjacent to the residential properties, and additional landscaping. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximately one-story, 9,000-square-foot dance studio with associated parking, and will provide, and will provide an eight-foot fence along the east property line adjacent to the residential. The site will allow for, will follow office zoning district in regards to parking regulations, setback minimums, sign regulations, and landscape and parking. The developer will meet all other city codes through the development process. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a cross-public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi or the developers? And I have Kathy Novak and Travis Crafton here for questions if needed. Any questions? No hands raised? Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Mr. Pertle makes a motion. Ms. Snotty seconds a motion. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Raise your hands. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion, sir. Glad you were here, otherwise you were out the door, man. Thank you. Public hearing held, app, held, considered application, Z 23-01, filed City of Longview. Ms. Choi?
Thank you, Mayor Mack. The city of Longview is requesting to rezone property along Sherry Lane, east of Pine Tree Road. Currently, this neighborhood is a duplex neighborhood. The previous city of Longview zoning ordinance permitted duplexes in general retail zoning district. However, the current UDC does not. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. In order to correct this issue, city staff is requesting a rezone of these properties to bring them into compliance regarding zoning. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? If not, is there a motion? Ms. Snotty has a motion, is there? Ms. Snotty has a motion to approve. Do you have a second, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, a second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by raising your hands. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing held, considered application, Z 2302. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The city of Longview is requesting a rezone of property located along East Sycamore Lane, east of Pine Tree Road. Currently, this neighborhood is a multifamily neighborhood, just like the previous zoning case. In order to bring these properties into compliance, staff is requesting a rezone to multifamily. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a cross-public hearing, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion by a show of hand, please?
Move by approval.
Mr. Carpenter has a motion to prove. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pertle, seconds. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing to consider application, Z 23-03, filed by Cross Development. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located along Loop 281 from general retail and single-family to heavy commercial zoning district for approximately 4.5 acres of lot, two block one Liberty Baptist Church addition, located at 1500 West Loop 281. Caliper Collision is proposing to use the site for major automotive repair, which does require heavy commercial zoning designation. The tract directly to the east of this property is currently, I believe it's under construction for a Dutch Brothers. They received a specific use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through window in 2002. This property does not share a property line with the adjacent residential neighbors. The tract east of the Dutch Brothers property also received a specific use permit in 2017 for a restaurant with a drive-through window with the following stipulations: that an eight-foot tall wooden fence be installed along the rear property line, maintenance of a 100-foot easement along the rear property lines where no buildings, parking, or lighting shall be allowed within the easement, and where as many trees as possible be preserved, and maintenance of a 50-foot natural buffer at the rear of the property adjacent to the residential, and that's within that 100-foot easement. That tract does share a property line adjacent to the residential, which is known as Wildwood. Caliper Collision is proposing a one-story building and with approximately 6,000 square feet in size. They are proposing an eight-foot solid wood fence adjacent to the properties that are zoned residential with access only from West Loop 281. They are also proposing a 75-foot easement where no buildings, parking, lighting shall be allowed, and where as many trees as possible will be preserved. Within the 75-foot easement, they are proposing a 50-foot natural buffer greenbelt easement. These easements will be directly adjacent to the residential properties. Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to approve the request with the following stipulation, and their vote was two, forwarded two to one to approve. The stipulations listed below are eight-foot wooden fence, a solid wooden fence adjacent to the residential properties, a 75-foot easement where no building, parking, lighting shall be allowed, and where as many trees as possible will be preserved, a 50-foot natural greenbelt easement within the 75-foot easement, and no access allowed from Liberty Lane. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This is a cross-public hearing, which is now open. I have two speaker cards on this. I have, are you all wanting to speak or just here for questions? I have a Jack Zanger slash Joe Dell, and I have a Mr. Sam Forrester.
I want to speak.
If you'd like to speak, then come forward, Mr. Forrester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. First of all, I want to thank you for.
First of all, I want to thank you for providing the process of going through this where we can discuss, have a venue where citizens can come together and discuss issues that affect everybody, both the city and the residents. So thank you for that. I currently live in Wildwood and have been there for approximately 20 years.
Mr. Forrester, would you just please state your full name and your address, please?
Sorry, Sam Forrester, 1500 Meandering Way, Longview, Texas.
Thank you, sir.
Which is in Wildwood.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me out without them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. First of all, I'm a commercial businessman and I'm all for business, I'm all for people that want to get ahead and add value to the community, I think that's great. I think body shops, sadly, I use them a lot, I think they add value to the community. So I'm not against a body shop, I'm not against people wanting to make themselves better and doing commerce. What I am against is things that provide, that provide, is the right word, additional pollution, be it noise pollution, light pollution, or traffic pollution, and the potential for all three of those is within this project. I don't know how much more pollution it will add, but I don't think anybody in the room will deny that it will add some more light pollution, some more noise pollution, some more traffic pollution than we already have. And like you said earlier, Longview is a nice place to live. I don't think that anybody wants to make it not a nice place to live, we all enjoy it here, we all love it here, we like the way things are now. I'm also not opposed to change, I just think that this is not the place to put a body shop. I think, unless I misheard you, the coffee shop has a 100-foot easement behind, is that correct?
It's not the coffee shop, it's the property adjacent to the coffee shop.
It's a 100-foot easement?
Yes, sir, it's behind it.
And what does it do?
It's vacant right now, but it was, the bronze was.
Okay, and the new place is going to have a 75-foot easement. So I'm not sure why we give a vacant lot a 100-foot easement and then we give a building that has, is going to make noise and have attractive attention, a 75-foot easement. It's going to definitely make more noise from 75 feet away than it would from 100, that's the first point I have. Secondly, the phrase "try to preserve trees," I think everybody in this room, for lack of a better word, is a green person. We, that's necessary for us to live, breathe, have beauty, and I just don't like the phrase, you know, not unnecessarily move trees. I think we need to have a better understanding of what that means, they're going to clearcut it. I don't see how they couldn't, because you have to store cars there, I mean, they're buying the place to store cars. And I think there's plenty of other places in Longview that would be better suited to have this particular type of business. It's just, even the phrase "heavy commercial," this is the loop, this is a neighborhood, and I don't like the word "heavy commercial," I mean, that's just, you know, that just doesn't sound right next to a nice neighborhood. Wildwood's a nice place to live in Longview, Texas, and I don't think we need heavy commercial next to a nice residence. Every one of y'all live in a nice residence, right?
Mr. Forrester? Yep, I'm over the. Three minutes is up, sir.
That's right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Does Jack Zanger or Joe Dell care to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Joe Dell, Cross Development, 4336 Marsh Ridge Road, Carrollton, Texas, 75010. I'm the developer and applicant, Jack Zanger is my civil engineer, triangle engineer, so he'll answer technical questions or specific to site plans. If we could pull the site plan back up, I'd like to just address the previous gentleman's comments and just kind of walk through it. Planning Commission, we agree with their stipulations that they've placed upon us. The one caveat we kind of talked about was the wood fence and that idea of preserving those trees back there. If you look at our site plan, okay, so the site plan had that 75-foot buffer, and if you looked at it, we have nothing behind that. Our parking stops there, so there's no reason for us to be in that area pretty much at all, especially the 50-foot greenbelt that's going to be there. So one question was the eight-foot fence, can it be at the rear of the parking lot instead of up against the neighbors' six-foot fences that are there existing, because we'll have to go in there and to build that, we definitely will be at least eliminating some trees, and so that's a thought from our side to help maintain as many trees being truly preserved, not clearcut, not thinning. We intend not to touch it at all if we don't have to. As far as the development, there's heavy commercial right next door in the ATV place that is existing, and so we are pursuing zoning that's consistent with the area that's there. And then the pollution, that came up at Planning Commission as well, and, you know, the Caliber Collision is not what we think about the old mom-and-pop's body shops where they're hammering out dents and grinding on cars and it is a, it's pretty much pull the part off, put the new part on, paint it, send it out. It's, they're, they're, you know, the way they operate is this, their catchphrase is restoring the rhythm of your life. The intent is not to have the car sit there very long, few days max to get it in and out. And the good thing about these shops is they're all air-conditioned, so all the work is done inside the building with doors closed. Greatly reduces any type of sound that may transfer outside of the building. So we have done noise studies on several calibers throughout the state of Texas and throughout the country, and it's really, drive-through speakers are louder than a lot of times what you can hear coming out of the body shop, because there's a single compressor that runs every tool, which is also in an enclosed area. And then lighting, we'll follow all guidelines required for lighting, for shielding if we need to, to direct all light towards the Caliber Collision, we'll have a photometric plan that the city will have to review and approve through their permitting department and fully onboard with meeting that. And then when it comes to pollution itself, Caliber Collision uses all water-based paints and they're very low volume stored on-site. Their paint booths are state-of-the-art, the EPA and TCEQ cover all of the vent stacks and the requirement for scrubbing the air and keeping it clean. I'm not going to pretend some exhaust isn't going into the air, it will, but anyways, we're here to thank you for your consideration and would appreciate your support in approving the project.
Thank you, sir. The public hearing is still open, is there any questions or comments from counsel?
I do.
Mr. Pertle?
I have a lot of calls in Texas and emails from the residents in Wildwood. And I've driven around to a lot of the collision places around town. I've used quite a few of them in the last few years myself. I'm having a hard time seeing that some of the things that he's telling me can't, can't not happen. I really can't support this because of, I wouldn't want to live next door to one, and then I'm thinking about what's going to go on the other side of that. We've got vacant property right there. Are we starting to limit ourselves to the heavy commercial and keep on working on down the road to two other pieces of property or one for sure that's on the side of that? And I wouldn't want to live right behind it myself, and that was posed to me. And that's part of my decision for not supporting it. The other part is, I had, like I say, I had so many contacts from my constituents over in that area, even across the loop over there in Northridge and everything, that didn't want it. So that's why I can't support this at this time.
Any other comments from counsel? Ms. Choi, I have, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Carpenter, I'm looking over here and I don't see you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, counsel. When this issue first came up, I had the opportunity to be in Houston, Texas, the week after the PNC discussion, and I just made it a point to stop by a caliber down there and just to see exactly what we were seeing. What I found was a very architecturally nice building. I found no bay doors that were open, fronts or backs. I found numerous cars stored within the fence, and I did not see any, anything that I think would be detrimental based on what we're seeing. I mean, I don't see any VOCs and lacquers flying up and down the loop. I think it's, it's not your dad's body shop anymore because there's so much regulation. And I think it's an opportunity for us to bring another good business and another good citizen to our, to our city. I am sure you that, that we don't necessarily drive as good as other parts of Texas, and therefore, I think it would be in our best interest to, to welcome this, this citizen. And if you haven't seen one, you can go out on their website and look at the locations and the planning, the way they plant, the way they, they bring the issue in. So it's, it's, it's several steps above what I would consider a heavy commercial, noisy, polluting. And I think they did deal with, if I remember right, from the P and Z meeting, there was some concern about the lighting coming towards Wildwood, and I believe that they were going to provide those studies for us in the permitting process. So that's what I saw in Houston. That's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Ms. Choi, okay, nevermind, go ahead, I'll speak last.
I just have one more question. I would just like to see maybe some more, like, preservation of trees more than just that little excerpt. So if I were to agree with this, I'd have to see some more trees being preserved. I know that the reason for attracting a lot of people to our area are the beautiful piney woods, and I also have a concern with a lot of developers tearing down trees, which I know that we need to do that in order to develop, but I think that we need to do the most that we can to preserve those as well.
So are you saying that the P and Z has not put a big enough buffer in there yet, or exactly what are you saying?
Yeah, for my liking, I don't think so, I would like to revisit that buffer.
Okay, I guess you have to go to a P and Z meeting to do that, because we don't, unless we make an addendum to what P and Z has brought forth to us, we either approve this or we don't approve this, or unless you make an addendum to that.
I would like to make an addendum to that.
Okay, well, just one second, let's finish the discussion first. Ms. Choi, anybody else, counsel? Okay, Ms. Choi. So right next door is heavy commercial, correct or incorrect?
That is correct, to the west of the property is heavy commercial. This is shown there in the red. There's general, the current property is zone general retail, and then there's retail to the east, light commercial and heavy commercial past that.
Okay. And isn't the Toyota dealership just right in that same vicinity?
Yes, sir, the Toyota dealership is to the east of this property and they are zoned heavy commercial, yes, sir.
How much, and I'm going to address this to you, Mr. Dell, how much difference is your body shop where you repair cars in an enclosed area than what Toyota does where they repair cars in an enclosed area?
Sure, so I'm not familiar with Toyota. Let's state my name again, are you good?
No, no, you're good, you're good, we got you.
So I'm not familiar with Toyota and if they have a body shop or not, a lot of car dealerships don't and some do. So I would tell you, I probably would bet, based on the pictures I can see, that's not an air-conditioned shop, so I bet their doors are open if they're doing bodywork. We are an air-conditioned shop where the doors will be closed, and we are a retail feel. Counsel member is correct, it is a retail-looking building, the entire storefront that you see from the road will be stone and stucco, and we'll have a parapet across the front with a sign band, it's a very nicely-done building. And it feels retail, even though in this zoning requires a heavy commercial use. And so to the buffer question, if I can address that real quick, a larger buffer would eat into any type of storage parking, and so our client does require a certain amount of storage to be able to produce the cars, to get them in and out of the shop. And so increasing that buffer would eliminate the ability to have that storage, which would probably eliminate the ability for the project to move forward. And I hate to say it like that, but it just, our client requires a certain number of parking spots to be profitable if they're going to open a business there, because they have two paint booths and they move, they move a lot of cars through, which is interesting, the traffic is far less than any other use, because we've done ITE trip studies through the ITE data books, and it's far less of an auto-traffic use than even the Dutch Brothers and the Brahms that's proposed for next door and then going forward on up and down the road. So our, I think it's like 16 cars in a peak hour and then it falls off drastically in off-peak hours to like seven or eight. It's really low traffic because it's insurance-driven, their client is the insurance companies, and it's a retail feel for you to go drop your car off and it be greeted with a smiling face and a warm body, and they take your car and they process it, get it in back, they send you off with, whether it's a rental they coordinated for you or someone picks you up and then your car's ready a few days later to be picked up, looking brand-new. So it's really a top-notch operation, largest auto body shop in the country, so they're, they know what they're doing. And so I hope that answers questions that might have been out there and, yes.
But you are assuring me that everything is done inside the building?
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Operational, their, their business license, it's, that's how they do it, they can't hire the team they need, the mechanics they need within the shop at the pay they pay without an air-conditioned shop, they just won't work there in the, especially in Texas. Now, up north, it's different, it doesn't get as hot, but here in Texas, insulated garage doors closed, insulated building, fully air-conditioned.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Roy, do you have a question?
Yeah, is this, excuse me, sir, is this your first location in Longview? Is this the first location?
This is the first new building in Longview, we've looked at other sites, and I think Caliber does acquisitions, but I don't think they've acquired any body shops in Longview.
This will be the first Caliber?
As far as I'm aware of, this will be the first Caliber, yes. Now, Caliber has other developers, but I would assume that it would come before the planning unless it was already a heavy commercial and just going right in for permits, I wouldn't be aware of that. But as a developer for Caliber, we're aware of this is the only one in Longview that's being pursued right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Because I think, I think as, you know, as Mr. Forrester pointed out, we want to see business grow in Longview, and I know, everybody has concerns about what goes in next to them, but we have to be very careful how we do that as a council, because we have, we don't want to be seen as an anti-business community. But I am impressed that this is all done inside a building. I had, I came into this not knowing this, and I thought it's, body shop would be a difficult place to be there, but with what you've told me, I feel much, much more comfortable with that scenario that you presented to us. I don't see it being any different than any other business, as long as it's enclosed within the confines of your building and it's insulated, what you said, and air-conditioned. Ms. Choi?
I do want to clarify one thing, heavy commercial does allow for outside, work outside. So if Caliber Collision didn't go there, any other use is allowed and heavy commercial could go there. But work outside is allowed in heavy commercial zoning districts, so I do want to be clear about that.
Thank you, Ms. Choi.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Mr. Carpenter has a move for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Snotty seconds. All in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? Motion carries, let the record show, motion carries six to one, please. Thank you, counsel. We are now, excuse me, a public hearing to consider application Z 23-04, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 28 acres of Abstract 186 of the Delora Sanchez survey tract 1 and 10-02, Section 5, located on the east side of Gilmer Road, south of Burke's Road, from agriculture to single-family for zoning district. This property was annexed in the 80, and when annexation occurs, the property is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. And when development occurs, the property must be rezoned. The applicant would like to develop this property for a single-family residential neighborhood. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open, I do have a speaker card for questions only with John Bull. Any questions, so Ms. Choi or Mr. Bull? Did I pronounce that right? Okay, if not, the public hearing is now closed, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Ms. Gamboa has a motion approved, Ms. Ishara has a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. That brings us to Ashen item, Consider Resolution Authorizing and Direct the City Manager, the city manager does need to execute necessary documents for the purchase of three sanitation trucks. Mr. Archer?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. McPhee. So tonight I bring for counsel consideration the purchase of three garbage trucks, this will be two side loaders and one rear loader. As you know, the vehicle replacement in sanitation is important. You've seen this out there on late nights before, that's usually equipment that's created problems for us. And so this is to address that, we have three aging vehicles that would be replaced with these, with these vehicles here. Real quick, I want to go over, as you can, as you remember, on January 12th, y'all approved a resolution to reject bids for the financing of these three trucks. The applicants that, or the people, the vendors that responded, were just not in compliance with the specification. So we looked at that, it's real important that we It's real important that we get this, these vehicles replaced and keep on that schedule, excuse me. And so, but in an effort to do that, speed this up as quickly as we could and save the ratepayers money, we talked about different options, and we found a good one. We found an option that's going to be great. So, in the water fund, each and every year, we set aside money for capital projects, and, and we do that each year, and that's, that's for those capital projects. We found, we determined that we could loan that money over to sanitation for the purchase of these vehicles and not, not create any delivery problem as far as getting any capital projects completed in the water fund. And so, not only will we be able to do that, save those taxpayers money, we'll do that and save them that, that finance charge as well. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Archer? Mr. Wade?
Mr. Archer, are these replacing trucks, or are we going to add to our fleet?
No, it's, it's replacing old trucks that have gotten to the end of their life cycle.
So, this is not going to do anything to speed up the process now?
No, no.
Okay.
But, but if we can, if we can get new trucks out there, that'll speed up the process, because many days we find ourselves where we've got several trucks down, we're hunting trucks to get the routes picked up.
You guys do a great job.
These guys are out there seven days a week, they never take a holiday off. Come on.
They do a great job. They do a great job.
They're amazing crew.
They do a great job.
They are amazing crew. If they had good equipment, then they could get it done. I'm all for it.
Any other questions, Mr. Archer? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Ms. Gamboa has a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Wade, seconds. All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Renate, items of community interest, Mr. Carpenter, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. A couple of things that I'm, and I'm not sure what order they're coming up in, so please bear with me. Greckton Food Pantry will be continuing next Thursday. They kind of caught a ice delay on the early one this month, but next Thursday, 11 to 1 at Greckton on Pine Tree Road. They're serving a little over 300 families a week. It's a good cause if you want to come out to, to get groceries, or if you want to come and help, all would be appreciated. Next, this is the most interesting thing. I, I sent a different picture, but this is the one that, that we got back. Much to my surprise, a few days ago, I was watching the news, and there was a story that, that Ms. Lisha did on the importance of refrigeration, refrigeration failure, freezers, and freezer failure. And I want the council to know and the citizens to know that if you didn't get a chance to see that, go back and look at that on Channel 7, because she brought some issues in the story that I quite frankly could have gotten hurt by, because I did not understand what she was referring to till I studied it. But it makes me proud to have people like Ms. Lisha that can, can look out for our personal health and the safety of our city and all the things that she does, and I just want her to know how much I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Everyone, in honor of Black History Month, Harley Baptist Church will recognize Divine Nine and HBCUs on Sunday, February 12th at 10:00 a.m. So, if you're available, please come out and worship with us on Sunday. Also, there's a free kid fish derby, the Ricky Borden Memorial Kid Fish Derby, 10 to 2 p.m. on Saturday, February 18th at Teague Park. This event is sponsored by Parks and Recreation, the City of Longview Parks and Recreation, I'm sorry, the Borden Family and Texas Park and Wildlife. So, bring your kids out and have a good time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Mr. Wade?
Nothing tonight, there.
Ms. Ishar?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Gamboa?
Good evening, everyone. You have a couple of days until February 12th to get to the Longview Community Ministries for the Super Bowl of Caring. They're in desperate need of water, Gatorade, ramen, other canned goods, and non-perishables, so please drop some of those things off there and help get back to your community. The other aspect to Mr. Carpenter's East Texas Food Bank is the East Texas Food Bank distribution. They really need volunteers, starting at 7:00 a.m. to help sort some of those, the vegetables and potatoes, putting them into different containers and distributing them. So, if you have some time and you want to go out to the MODCOB, the rodeo arena, we will be back there sorting food, and we could really use your help. So, I'm looking forward to seeing you all at 7:00 a.m. Right, John Newstad? See you out there. And I wanted to also thank Councilwoman and Mayor Protem, Kristen Ishihara, and Judge Bill Stout for serving on the Chamber of Commerce's board, and I want to thank Ms. Jessica LaRue for appointing me to be the city councilperson on the Chamber of Commerce board, and I look forward to serving there with Commissioner Ray Bostick, so go small business.
Mr. Pertle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee? Well, seniors, don't forget to submit your application for our annual scholarship before February 28th. The scholarship is for graduating seniors from Hallsville, Longview, Pine Tree, and Spring Hill who live within the city limits. Apply today at longviewtexas.gov/scholarship. And remember, the topic's easy, just impress me. Big Tex, visit Longview and Longview Economic Development Corporation and invite you to learn about the amazing things built right here during Big Tex on Saturday, February 25th. The free event offers behind-the-scenes hours to 10 tours to 10 different industries, plus kid-friendly, hands-on activities at downtown museums. Learn more and register at visitlongviewtexas.com/bigtex. Boards and commissions, if you want to get involved and serve your community, a great place to start is our boards and commissions. Applications are being accepted through April 14th, so apply today at longviewtexas.gov/boards. And finally, love Longview volunteers or seek speaking of loving your community. Keep Longview Beautiful is looking for volunteers for its annual Love Longview Day of Serving, which will be held on Saturday, April 1st. Learn more and register to serve at lovelongview.com. With that, we will now convene an executive session to discuss personnel matters under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, discuss and deliberate on deployment studies and succession plan for the office of the city attorney. We will not return following executive session for any further actions, so this meeting is adjourned. God bless, see you all next time.